We now have another student now, Madison Teeters, who is going to read a proclamation. Madison, where you come out on it?
Whereas, whereas our community values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway of to success for our children and whereas Paul Pudgeinson, Melvin Van Hoes, William Fraley, and Paul Greer, and Jesse Sawyer, contribute greatly to this community through their service on the Johnson County Board of Education, and whereas these decision makers are responsible for maintaining strong, effective budgetary oversight, high standards for the employment, and safe, well-managed set of school facilities, and whereas these four members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and commitment to our children's teachers, and whereas January 2020 marks Kentucky's authorization of the contributions through School Board Recognition Month. Therefore, the students and staff of the Johnson County School System do hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 throughout this community and the school district as School Board Recognition Month, and urge all citizens to honor Paul Pudgeinson, Melvin Van Hoes, William Fraley, Paul Greer, and Jesse Sawyer on this notice.
And I believe we have some students who are going to present two certificates to each one of the board members. Come on up if you have a certificate. We also want to thank Johnson Central High School, FCC LA, and Ms. Macy Stewart, Ms. Neve Roland, and I think Ms. Penny Hager for preparing some snacks for you all today and some goodies. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. You're much appreciated and words can't express all of our appreciation for you. So please join me in standing and give them another big round of applause. And now, we'll move to student recognition. So I am going to turn it over. We have with us tonight a group of very talented students. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crum to introduce Ms. Amy Conley.
Well, I really don't even think I need to do much introductions. I don't think there's anybody in our community by this point that doesn't know what our choir brings to the table and the reputation that we have statewide. But it is such an honor to get to serve at a school where we have students that are this talented and get to showcase those talents on such a wonderful stage as they do. So I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Conley to introduce everyone.
I want to thank Mr. Cochran and the board for inviting us here today, and Mr. Crum, and Mr. Sean Hall that get me every day and all the hours with the Allstate kids. We had 19 students make Allstate Choir this year from the middle school and high school. So I'm going to call them up. I'm going to start with the middle school, and then we can go to the high school. And the high school students are actually going to sing their piece for you today. And the middle school piece was in Latin, and the high school piece was in French. So it's very challenging, and I'm very proud of you guys. And I'd like to thank the parents before I forget, because without your support, these kids would not be here at all. And I really appreciate the parents of all these students. So we have from Johnson County Middle School, Ms. Haley Anderson. Come on up here, Haley. Claire Holden. Madeline Burchett. Our next student, I'm going to stop here and say a little bit about him. It's Mr. William Case from W.R. Castle. Come on up, Will. Will comes to choir two days a week through Mrs. Andrea Hall's Gifted and Talented Program. So he gets to come up into the middle school choir. He auditioned for a middle school Allstate and made middle school Allstate as an elementary student. So he beat out fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth graders to make Allstate. Very proud of this student. Ms. Abigail Canigan. Jayden Easthead. Ms. Constance Martin. Mr. Joe May. And we almost have perfect attendance tonight. Lexie Parry just has the flu, so she didn't get to be with us. But that is our middle school Allstate students. Moving right along to the high school, we have Ms. Allison Case. Joanna Chapman. Mr. Caleb Sloan. Ms. M. Claire Sloan. Mr. Whalen Bays. Riley Kreis. Ms. Jasmine Fannin. Ms. Hannah Shepherd. Mr. Joshua Sloan. And Ms. Holly Williams. You want to get a picture with them?
Yes.
Before we send them away. While they're going back, I also want to take a second and thank Ms. Hall for assisting me. We have over 200 students in the choir program from middle school and high school, and you helped me so much, so I want to thank you. Thank you. I love you so much.
Count three. One, two, three. Are you going to sing?
Yes. And I'm going to brag on Ms. M. Claire too. She's getting ready to get on the bus to go cheer. So we're going to sing through this piece. The piece they're going to do for you is the piece they auditioned on. If you don't understand it, it's okay, because it isn't French. You got it? I can't leave this out. I just forgot to put it in my notes, because I'm so... But Ms. Allison Case has made Allstate. She's broke a record for Johnson Central. She's made Allstate eight consecutive years in a row. And I just want to... Clark Sexton had the record, but she hasn't been there on it now, so I'm proud of her.
Great job. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Moving on now to the staff recognitions. Each month, as you know, we give out Golden Eagle Award winner to a certified staff member and a classified staff member who has gone above or who does go above and beyond regular college duty. These, to me, are so special because the Golden Eagle itself is made by the engineering department at Johnson Central High School and finished and painted by the art department at Johnson Central High School. So recipients will receive that plus a certificate, and as always, these are sponsored by Castle's Jewelry and Gifts. So our certified staff member. The certified recipient of the Golden Eagle Award is described as "one of the brightest teachers." As a matter of fact, his supervisors were concerned that he was too smart and would have trouble relating to students. But quite the opposite has happened. The kids love him and request him for class. He's the most sought-after ACT tutor. He not only helps our current students with getting into college, but he also helps our former students stay in college by helping them with their classes. In addition to his teaching and his tutoring duties, he also works tirelessly assisting students on their GSP applications and essays. Honestly, he's as good in English as he is in math. He's worked hard as a Johnson Central High School student, but works even harder now as a teacher. He can always be found in his classroom, teaching, walking around, helping students. The fact that 14 kids voluntarily signed up for calculus BC and have staying in the class, the school's hardest math class, is a testament to his ability not only to teach, but to grow a class that regularly has seen, or only a handful of students each year. Congratulations to also the newly elected member of Johnson Central High School, High School Math Teacher, Mr. Sean Butcher. For a classified recipient, this classified recipient of the Eagle Award is known as "the one to make things happen." She goes above and beyond to help plan and set up for special meetings, faculty trainings, and various student dances and activities throughout the year. She's loyal, dedicated, and a valued part of the building. She maintains financial records for several budgets and is responsible for textbook purchases and inventories. She runs interference between the school and the board office, ensuring that all purchase orders are processed, orders placed, bills paid, and properly accounted for. Not to mention, she also doubles as a copy machine repair person. To quote the principal, Mr. Crum, "Everybody needs a penny." This is the month of the Golden Eagle Award, Penny Hager.
All right, here we go. One, two, and three.
Our first order of official business after calling the meeting to order is to approve the minutes from December 16, 2019, regular meeting and bills on payroll through January 23, 2020. Is our motion to approve. Motion's made. Second by Jesse. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. District reports, Mr. Adams.
Ian, you're going to be doing that.
Sure. So I believe the first item is the change order for the soils at the interior of the new ATC renovation, or the ATC renovation in the building. So when we opened up this slab to run some new piping, we discovered some issues with your soils, where you had water actually seeping upward when that pressure change happened. So we had the geotechnical engineer come look and evaluate, make a recommendation. Based on this recommendation, we developed a CCD, which is a To-Not-Exceed Construction Change Directive. That way, we can monitor the actual quantities installed and adjust for the change order once complete. So the good news is, the work was completed, and it was less than anticipated in the CCD. So I believe it came into a total of $17,613.97 for that change to remediate the soils under the slab. And the reason again for this is that we're coming in with a new slab on top of your existing slab, in the existing portion of the building, to raise you out of the flood elevation per KD requirements. So with all that extra pressure, we were wanting to make sure we had a good, stable slab without any... That wouldn't have any settlement over time. So if there aren't any questions on that, we can move to approve and then discuss on the schedule.
Did you talk about change order number two?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I forgot the same item. So change order number two, there's an existing Dutch door, which is a split door, so the top leaf could move independently at the bottom of the leaf. We had planned on, as requested, using the one that was existing in the space, but once the contractor started doing the work and attempting to patch it, it was a little more difficult to do than we had anticipated. And once you have the full new renovated ATC, it would kind of look bad as well. So the contractor brought it up as a potential change. It was a small nominal, marginal amount. I believe it was $898.96. So we recommended accepting this change order based on that small value. Really helped the space appear new. And so those are the two change orders on the table right now. With that, we also have the schedule. And I just put a few out in terms of the soils, that we're not seeing any impact to the end date. So that top portion is the ATC, so those red and blue lines there. The key date is that 7/1, July 1 date. We're still reaching substantial completion then, which then they'll pick up their punch list items.
So that's for the ATC as well, as all of the safety vestibles?
Correct. The safety vestibles are the lineups on the bottom, and those are on schedule as well. But yes, if there's no questions, we'll approve. Now you have a problem about something?
There are motion to approve. Motion's are made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made. Second, any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next item.
The next item, I believe, is the floors. So the floor at the middle school, where we're doing a new vestible, new security vestible, the new vestible will be in sort of L shape where your existing vestible is, and then connecting over to the office. If you recall, that's actually all open corridor right now. So we had new flooring that was going to occur in there, and then new flooring in the office. Well, we did this to kind of minimize the impacts that we're having budget-wise and work-wise on the school. In the progress of construction, it's brought to maybe fill out that make a square rather than just the L of the vestible, to get a complete look to your new kind of lobby entry area. And that is still in the works, so we've received pricing from the contractor, but we've actually asked them to revise that per unit prices and some other things to clarify their pricing. But so that one should be on the next board meeting agenda with a pricing that we find fair and reasonable.
So we want to hold up on approval for that?
But it'll be a small... It's around, I think the original price is a little over $2,000, $2,500 in that ballpark. So it should be less than that, but we'll see what the pricing comes at. And I believe that's all my items. So unless there's questions, I can just send this to you for signature.
Next item?
5C. Mr. Adams is in a training today. We're asking the board to approve payments to Alliance Corporation for the ATC renovation and everything. As Zee said, is on schedule, and we recommend those payments of $67,000.
Thank you. Is our motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion's are made, is there a second? Motion's made. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item D.
We're asking the board to approve Sherman Car, Martin Heart Architects payment of $29,543.
Thank you. Is our motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item E.
Asking the board to approve Ellie Gregg and Associates,[1255.12][1255.12]$3,042.
Thank you. Is our motion to approve?
Let's have a move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next item, B. Attendance Report. Mr. East...
We have an A. report right there. We just asked the board to approve the construction vendor for $17,000, $19,000.
Thank you. Is our motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, Mr. East.
All right, as I've been doing this school year, I have a attendance report for, as of today, actually, I have most of the information updated. On the first page is month five. Month five actually ended at the end of the year. So it started January of month five and ended. We are currently in month six, but the last time I reported it, it not had the final numbers, everything was closed out. These are the numbers for month five at each of the schools, once we closed out that month. So we'll turn the page. This is reflective as of today, and you'll see there, let's move across that way over there, month six, January 6 through January 27. And for the district, our current, just for this month, our attendance rate is at 90.64. As you can see there, we've been hit kind of harder with some sickness, as you're all well aware. And that's where we're at currently. A year ago, we were at 91.26. On the next page, it's years of dates total. The black is the current year, which is 92.96, our current attendance rate compared to last year, is 93.53 at this date and time of last year. And also, I reinserted, the last two pages, I reinserted information. That's later on in the agenda, I know. There's more information, I think, for it as well. But I've reinserted these two sheets from previous presentation, the attendance report presentation. The first page that you're looking at, there's the number of students that are non-resident students, or students that we are seeing, live in Johnson County, that we are sending to other schools. And then finally, the last page, the students that live in various other districts that are attending Johnson County schools. That total is 463 students are attending that are non-residents, and students living in Johnson County that are attending other schools, is 249. So we've got 463 compared to 249 as far as total number. And again, I think that's later on in the agenda, we'll talk about that later on as far as the council agreements. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. New business? Item A, Ms. Castle.
You have in front of you your draft budget for fiscal year of 2021. This will be the first of the three budgets that we'll be bringing to you later throughout the year for next school year. And I'll bring back in May the tentative budget, and I'll bring back in September the working budget to you. We'll talk just some brief highlights that are within this draft budget. It contains a 6% contingency amount of $1,773,584. You know, KD recommends to us that we have a 5% of greater contingency, so we feel really good with that, by the way. We're required by law to have a 2%, so we feel like we've got to get healthy, budget and contingency for next year in the draft budget. Your general fund draft budget is approximately $26.4 million, of which about $20 million is budgeted for your salaries and the fringe in the general fund. And we feel really good about that as well, because we're under that 80% recommended amount that when KD tells us that they want, they do not want a greater than 80% of your budget to be for salaries and fringe, so we feel like we're being very conservative, and we're doing well with our money. We're in a particular circumstance with the board meeting being tonight and what's going to happen tomorrow. And tomorrow night, we expect the governor is expected to release his budget bill. And so today, and Friday, LRC has been reaching out to those finance officers, trying to get some salary information, because as we all know, one of the things that is anticipated is, will there be a $2,000 mandated increase, you know, salary increase in his budget bill, will there not? So this draft budget does not contain a salary increase, because we're patiently waiting to see what happens tomorrow. I've kept the salaries frozen in this budget, and the only thing that I've increased in this budget is the step increases for general fund. And if you... So that wouldn't be a salary increase, but just the steps alone for the general fund is approximately $204,000, and they just, with this additional fringe increases of the steps, is another $103,000. So you're looking at an additional $307,000 in general fund for next year, based on our existing employees. And as we know, that is large in part due to the increasing county employees retirement system rate. They've already given that to us and told us we expect it to be, to go from 24.06 to 26.95. So I've included that in the budget as well, so I can have as true numbers as possible. And when I come, when we come back in May, we'll look at the tentative budget then, and hopefully then we'll know what's going to, you know, come down from the session. I'm assuming we should have more information then. We also should have some seat base amounts, because we don't even have a true seat base number, because we're still operating off of the old $4,000 that we're using this year, because in his budget bill, they should establish a new seat base as well. So that being said, I feel it's a good starting point for a draft budget. We put everything we can into it as far as the best information we have at this time, but tomorrow's going to be very telling.
Thank you. Next, 6B. Mr. East.
It's a time to be thinking about our reciprocal agreements. However, at this point in time, I've only received contracts from Martin County, Pike County, Morgan County. Those were for any and all students. And also have Lawrence Counties, which is same as it's been for the last five or six years, a one-to-one agreement. And at that point, at this point in time, it's the only contracts that I have received. So, you know, of course, there's still a couple of big ones out there. If you look at those totals of students that, students that are attending Paintsville, and students we're getting from Paintsville, and Floyd County, and those are the ones that's still out. I would recommend maybe tabling it until next meeting, until you get a better idea of if we get some of these contracts in.
Let's move. All right, we'll table that until the next meeting. Thank you. Anybody all in favor? Any opposed? Thanks. Next, Mr. Jeff Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve and accept, I guess, FCC offer of assistance of $60,971. Accept and manage.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next item, Ms. Coleman.
We're asking, I thought she was in there. You all approved a few months ago, new ovens for all of our kitchens. Those have all been installed and are working successfully, all feedback, but we need to declare some surplus items now, stove tops, stack ovens, kettles, and some other kitchen equipment. We're asking that you approve that surplus, so we can sell those.
We're asking that you approve that surplus so we can sell those.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item E, Ms. Patton.
Yes, Johnson County currently has a contract with Vic Sandy Healthcare where their dental program comes into Johnson County. You may have seen their dental lab behind the Board of Education. But the services that they offer are just really high quality with Dr. James Stambo as the dentist. But we would like to get your approval to add their counseling services offered by Vic Sandy, using their trained counselors to work within our school system as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, item F, Mr. Young and Mr. Cockr.
We're asking the music families asked to use WR Cast before a family get together on February 1st. All paperwork is in and everything seems to be in order.
And we're also, we're asking for approval for basketball to be used, our gyms, and use soccer league.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item G, Mr. Young.
Yeah, this is to, we're asking the board to approve our annual spring PTO fundraiser.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Student trips.
We went ahead and just submitted most of our trips for the rest of the year to make it a little easier, and some of these are actually state competitions that you probably apologize, may not have to prove, but we want to go ahead and let you have all of them so you kind of see what all the opportunities our kids are getting to participate in. So choir, and Allstate Choir, FFA coming up, an SSLA trip, our JAG is going to their meetings, Skills USA, their state, Hosa as well. And then the band is going to the band clinic, and then their drills and drills that they do at the end of the year each year.
And I want to make note, the choir, the person you mentioned, is actually, they've been asked to come down and sing at the KSBA conference. Good honor.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve student trips?
Only.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item I.
Yes, we're asking for approval for our Family Resource Center directors to be able to write their grants for the 2021 school year. I think you all would agree that the Family Resource Centers are a very valuable part to our schools. So those are, they're working, they're going to work on them and get them ready in March, but we need your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item J.
This is a grand opportunity, Mr. Gibson over at the high school that works out with our entrepreneurial programs and school stores, a really good opportunity for us, and there's just an MOU that has to be assigned in conjunction with that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Only.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item K, Mr. Cockr.
Asking the board to approve our CDL new employee acquisition. As, asking to approve Dr. Rice, he is our current one, and he's in the same rate as last year for the new services.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item seven, Mr. Cockr.
I am passing around a sheet with my data concerning standard six collaborative leadership as I do each month. I put a different standard in the Superhead Professional Growth and Evaluation System. I will go with those with you unless you so desire, just wanted to have for your information.
Thank you. Also on your pack of information, you have the superintendent's personnel report. And with that said, the last item is motion to adjourn. Made a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out and working so well with the school system. Much appreciated. Thanks for everything you did tonight as well.